I would appreciate that you turn off your cell phones because this meeting is being recorded. And Ellen, would you please do our roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Callan-Carson?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Present.
Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Walters?
Present.
Mr. Weiner?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Lakkavoli?
Here.
Board Chair, Ms. Granato?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Ms. Angelika Data?
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. And can I have our National Merit Scholars who are here tonight to please stand where you are and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll get right into student and staff recognition?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening. First, for student staff recognition this evening, we have some National Merit Scholar recipients from Weathersfield High School. Mrs. O'Connor, come on up.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Superintendent Emmett, Chairman person Granato, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for having us this evening. We are here tonight to recognize four outstanding Weathersfield High School students who have been named as commended students for the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Out of the roughly 1.7 million juniors who took the PSAT MSQT test last fall, only 2% received this recognition. While this test is only one measure of their academic achievements, it is a result of the 12 years of hard work and dedication to their learning. Without such a commitment, this achievement would not have been possible. A spokesperson for the National Merit Scholarship Committee provided the following statement about their achievement. These students represent a valuable national resource. Recognizing their accomplishments, as well as their key role, the key role their schools play in their academic development, is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We at the National Merit Scholarship Committee hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue to pursue their academic success. We at Weathersfield High School are very proud of each of these amazing students and can't wait to see what their future holds. No doubt, the future is bright. But without any further delay, let me introduce your honorees tonight. For our students, when I say your name, please come see me. Our first commended student is Eleanor Ellie Bradley. Described by her counselor, Cindy Bryan, as a determined, funny, bright, and highly motivated individual, I have had the pleasure of knowing Ellie since she was in fifth grade at High Crest School. She has always been the student who brings a smile to everyone's face each morning. Even now in high school, she greets us in the morning with a smile and a bright "Good morning," which, as you may imagine, isn't always the reaction you get from a teenager at 7:20 in the morning. She is active in many clubs and activities here at Weathersfield High School, including most recently, the Weathersfield High School production of Macbeth, which just concluded its fall run. After high school, Ellie plans on studying nursing, hopefully in the honors program at Southern Connecticut State University. Congratulations, Eleanor, on your accomplishment. The next student I would like to introduce to you is Nathan Liu. Nathan is described by his school counselor, Sarah Coffey, as an old soul who is self-reflective, humble, and incredibly kind. Nate has impressed his teachers with not only his commitment to academic excellence, but his true desire to grow and learn and improve himself and the community which he serves. He has shown the skill not only in the classroom, but also in his music ensembles, where he took on the challenge of being in the orchestra pit in last year's school musical, and teaches alongside his fellow orchestra classmates to work with elementary students to improve their musical performance. Nathan plans on pursuing a degree in aerospace after graduation, hopefully at MIT. Eric Pianco, please join me. Eric Pianco is the next student we're recognizing tonight, described as a thoughtful young man who exudes a quiet confidence and humility. He is dedicated to his studies, but also has a variety of interests, including music, writing, philosophy, martial arts—I hear he's a black belt—and also, most recently, has discovered the theater, playing Macduff in our fall production of Macbeth. Eric's quick wit and kind nature shone through just today at Weathersfield High School at our in-school performance, when a fellow freshman thespian forgot his lines. Eric seamlessly offered a helping hand that no one in the audience picked up on, but people familiar with the play saw that Eric had quietly come to his rescue. This maturity, adaptability, and integrity are wonderful qualities that will take him very far in life. After graduation, Eric is considering furthering his studies in medicine or philosophy, and we know he will do famously. Our next commended student is Xenia Valentine. Xenia is described by her English teacher, Mr. Martin, as a flexible thinker and a natural creative writer, whose perseverance allowed her to improve dramatically in her analytical writing skills. While most students, who are good at probably everything, having this realization that she might not be good at something, many students would find it frustrating. Not Xenia. She took it as a challenge, often posing the question to her teacher and classmates, "What would happen if I did this?" in her pieces. She powered through these challenging assignments, quickly making adjustments to her writing, and leading class discussions that highlighted her ability to make connections between their learning in English class and the other areas of study that she was excelling in. In addition to her high-quality work in English, Xenia has excelled in both math and science coursework throughout high school. Based on this success, she is considering a number of degree options in the STEM fields after graduations. Congratulations on your accomplishment, Xenia. Thank you for having us tonight and allowing us to honor these wonderful students.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor.
Thank you.
Can we get a group picture?
Yes, I was going to ask that question.
You guys want to come up before?
Come on up, scholars. Congratulations to each of our scholars and to all of our parents and family members in the audience this evening. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Congratulations, all.
Much appreciated. So, next this evening, Mrs. Granato, I'd like to invite to the podium Shannon McNeese with the Weathersfield Education Foundation.
Hello, Mr. Emmett and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for your work on behalf of the Weathersfield Public Schools. It is an extra commitment, and I appreciate you. And thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Shannon McNeese, and I'm the proud mom of two Weathersfield Public School graduates, and I'm also serving as the president of the Weathersfield Education Foundation. Our mission is to provide funding for innovative and outstanding ideas that enhance and enrich the curriculum of the Weathersfield Public Schools. I came tonight to share with the Board of Ed the grants that our foundation was able to fund this year's for teachers and schools in Weathersfield. Our grant committee is led by Weathersfield Education Foundation Vice President Carolyn Fazina, and we are delighted to be able to share with you this year's grant winners. So there were 14 grants submitted. We opened the grants in March, and everyone is encouraged to apply. We were able to fund eight of the grants that were funded for a total of $10,768. So the first grant went to Erica—help me with the pronunciation—Hazei Haja—from Charles Wright School. She wrote a grant to get Ozobots, which are little robots that kids can write code. Elementary school students can do this. It's very simple. They write very simple code and learn about programming. And so we funded her grant for Ozobots. We funded Marissa Case at Charles Wright School, wrote a grant for another One School, One Book opportunity for the book Fenway and Hattie by Victoria Cole. We love to be able to fund literacy initiatives, especially the One School, One Book initiatives. And we were also able to fund it for Webb Elementary School, Sarah Johnson and Leilani Arnau, the One School, One Book, same book, Fenway and Hattie by Victoria Cole, and I believe they are even having a virtual visit with the author. Jacob Latham from Charles Wright wrote a grant to get ORF instruments to enhance the K-6 classroom. These are specialty instruments that are used in a variety of ways. Deirdre Mahoney from Charles Wright won a grant to create a school-wide sensory spaces to support social, emotional well-being. We're looking forward to seeing the results of that. The idea of sensory spaces is that kids would have places where they could have sensory experiences by touching, by walking, by doing different sensory activities. At Hanmer, Maria Aparo and Shayna Cates wrote a grant for guided play for kindergarten, and they earned some learning materials, as this is one of the first years that play is written into the state curriculum. We're very excited about play, and so we're happy to fund materials to support the play. High Crest, Melissa Johnston wrote a grant for math in practice, which—from this image it looks like just math workbooks, but it's actually a very interactive math curricular enhancement program. The Webb Leap Program also wrote a grant for sensory materials. Kristin Moreno led that grant, and we're happy to fund that grant for them. And to date, the Weathersfield Education Foundation has given more than $75,000 to the Weathersfield Public Schools, and we thank you all for supporting our mission. And Bobby Granato is also on our board, too. There's so many different things.
Thank you, Shannon. It's a delightful group to work with. Thank you. Anybody have any questions before we let Shannon go?
Would you—I don't believe that we had the slides in our packet. Would you be able to send those to us?
Absolutely.
That would be great. It's wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for everyone's sake here, how does it work? Is it one—a year, teachers apply, and then they hear about it before the school year starts?
That's exactly right. We open grants around March, and then we let teachers and principals know by the end of the school year, and the money comes into effect July 1. We mail a check on July 1 for this coming school year. So next March, grants will open again.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay. I'll wait till it goes up, Jim. Okay, so next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our regular Board of Ed meeting on October 22, 2024. Are there any corrections?
I think we need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Are there any corrections?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, on page nine of 10, there's a motion and a second to leave executive session, but there is no—we had a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, and it's not documented there.
It wasn't provided to me.
Okay, then I guess our secretary will have to provide it to you, but we definitely had a motion and a second to leave, to adjourn the meeting. If not, the meeting would still be in session.
Right, but I wasn't provided the information.
No, I understand. It's not your fault. I'm just saying.
Any other corrections? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes pass. And also on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our special Board of Ed meeting on October 23, 2024. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All right. Are there any corrections?
I second it for you, though.
Yes?
I'll help you out. Seconding it.
Okay, second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved. All right, is there anyone wishing to come up to the podium and have a comment, state your name and address? And may I remind you that comments are for five minutes. And also, another reminder, the Board does not respond to comments. So thank you for the understanding that. Okay? All right, we'll move right on. Mr. Emmett, you have some communications to share.
I do. Mrs. Granato, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Just a few items this evening. I certainly want to recognize all of our students and staff for their work in honoring our veterans yesterday. We had a day filled with honoring our veterans from Weathersfield High School, where we hosted the annual veteran ceremony. I know many of you were in attendance at that. It is an event that I am thrilled to see students at, and I know our veterans are very appreciative of that. We had a variety of activities throughout our schools, including a visit from a group of veterans at Silas Dean on Friday, a very powerful assembly for our seventh graders, and then a smaller group question-and-answer session for our eighth-grade group. And then across the elementary schools as well, there were a variety of different activities, including Webb Elementary School yesterday, where our sixth-grade Webb leaders ran a presentation with some of our veterans. So again, I'd like to take the opportunity to salute all of our veterans here in Weathersfield and say thank you for your service. The other thing I certainly want to mention tonight, obviously, the community is aware of the recent loss. We did get notification of the loss of our dear friend and colleague firefighter Rob Sharkevich on the 22nd of October during our last board meeting. Obviously, that has been a significant loss to this community, as we all know. In addition to that, I did get notification last Friday of the passing of former Emerson Williams Principal Elizabeth Katerius. Liz worked for the Weathersfield Public Schools beginning mid-year in 1989 and was with us in a variety of roles, including special education supervisor and principal of Emerson Williams, up to her retirement in 2013. I had the opportunity to work with her. She was an esteemed colleague and really left her mark on the Weathersfield Public Schools. I did attend the wake last evening, and it was nice to hear the family respond so positively for the outpouring of support from our Weathersfield Public School staff. So if you would all indulge me in a moment of silence for both firefighter Rob Sharkevich Sr., as well as Elizabeth Katerius, Principal Emerson Williams. Thank you. That's it for communications this evening.
Thank you. All right, tonight we have no action items, but we have a very important and informative presentation this evening. It's our secondary school improvement presentation by Silas Dean Middle School with their improvement plan. Come on up. Leadership team, thank you for being here. We're excited to hear from you.
We are honoring Mr. Sutton next week at our superintendents awards. I have quite the speech planned for him, so I hope you all can intend to enjoy it with us.
Displaying every quality I will be talking about right now.
Good evening, everyone. It's really great to see you all again. As many of you know, I'm Terri Yasko, I'm principal of Silas Dean Middle School. Tonight with me, I have our leadership team, who will be here, who is excited to talk about everything that we will be working on this year. It's been tremendous, this being my third year now already at Silas Dean, to see the growth, not only in our students, but also of our staff. And genuinely love working with each and every one of these people, and I would be remiss, as this is the last school improvement plan that I will be making with Michael as superintendent, that I would like to thank him for this opportunity once again to be here with these people and working in this building with these staffs and these students. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our leadership team.
Good evening. I'm Kayla Evans, Supervisor of Secondary Special Education. To start off with our empathy focus, last year Silas Dean Middle School was fortunate enough to implement the Wellness Center. This space was for students to access for a short break or have someone to talk to if they needed a social work support. This year, we're digging into it a little bit more and using data to create tiered interventions for students and develop focus groups based on student and staff input. In addition, staff will be exploring ways to build community partnerships in order to provide wraparound services to students and families. The Wellness Center also provides a space for students who struggle getting to school or may have school phobia. We have—we are working to refine our attendance process, starting with our classroom teachers and den, contacting home, developing that positive relationship with families, and then getting the support of a support service member through the Wellness Center. The Wellness Center can be used for a space to get re-acclimated to the building. This process would not be in place if we weren't able to implement the Wellness Center, as well as den through our schedule.
Hi, I'm Kelly Russo, Social Studies teacher and Indigo Team Leader. And as Kayla mentioned, as a school, we are really focusing on the SCL of our students. In addition to the Wellness Center, we have been really honing in on our den curriculum, as well as our care expectations, both of which align with the SDMS and district empathy goals and the vision of a graduate. Our den team has worked extremely hard revising the den curriculum to best meet the needs of our students. Throughout our lessons, the students participate in a variety of activities that focus on developing the social skills and use of restorative practices. These various activities include student-led circles to address school-wide issues. These circles help students to process, connect, and have their voices heard. In addition, through the use of RethinkEd, the students have an opportunity to learn and practice several strategies that will help them grow socially, emotionally, and academically. Some of these topics have included conflict resolution, taking accountability, and self-management. Furthermore, and perhaps most importantly, are the team-building activities that take place. The connections that we form within our dens are essential for a student's well-being and success at the middle school. Mrs. Conasentia, our school counselor, surveyed students during den in the beginning of the year, and among the questions asked was a question about whether students felt like they had a connection with an adult in the building. As a staff, this is vital information so that we can reach out to students who may be struggling. As a school, we are committed to creating a positive, comfortable, and safe community, and den time is imperative in helping to create this environment. In addition, SDMS Lions live by the CARE philosophy. CARE stands for four of the attributes that we value at our school. CARE stands for collaboration, accountability, respect, and empathy. At the start of each quarter, the students engage in learning about one of these expectations. As a group in den, we discuss what it is, what it means, what it can sound like, and what it should look like for ourselves and within our school community. Then, throughout the days, the students put that learning into action. Part of what makes this work is that the entire school is on the same page, practicing the same skills, and focusing on the same goal. It is truly a team-centered approach. We all work together, staff, administration, and students. We truly believe that if our students work towards the goals of CARE, they will become better learners and citizens.
Is this right? Oh, there it is. Sorry, did I hit the wrong one? Hi, sorry. I'm Kristen Fortuna, Agenda Team Language Arts teacher and team leader. And another way we are focusing on empathy at school is by giving students more opportunities to be involved in our school. Our Lion leaders are a group of seventh and eighth graders who are interested in taking on leadership roles in school. Their club meetings are focused around developing leadership skills, and they have put them to use during our sixth-grade spring tours, the seventh-grade summer program, the seventh-grade orientation, and at our open house. And we are also strengthening student council this year by encouraging students to have a voice in our school. We have had over 20 students join this year, which is much more than in recent years, and students are excited to represent the student body, share concerns and ideas, and plan activities and fundraisers to benefit our school and our Weathersfield community. Students drive the club's agendas, and so far, we have planned a much-needed Spirit Week and are in the process of planning two fundraisers, one in memory of Rob Sharkevich, and the other to benefit the Connecticut Children's Medical Center.
That's your first?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize. I'm up next, right?
Yeah.
Not only—Scott Boise, Assistant Principal at Silas Dean Middle School. So not only do we recognize the importance of student wellness, but also staff wellness. So we've done a few things at Silas Dean to promote that. The first thing we've done is tap-in-tap-out system created by staff so that a staff member may call on another staff member to cover their class for a few minutes. In the past, people have used it to use the bathroom, regroup, take an important phone call, provide additional support for a student, or get something they forgot for their class. This has been helpful to many staff members. It has been shared that although they may not use it, it is nice to know that it's there just in case it is needed. Friday appreciation. In an effort to increase staff wellness, we encourage staff to meet informally and celebrate each other. So on Friday mornings at Silas Dean, staff members bring treats. It's become so popular, there is a sign-up sheet. Staff volunteer to bring homemade and store-bought treats like fruits, donuts, bagels, and coffee is brewed for all. It is something that staff members really look forward to at the end of a hard week. Community circles. Another way we have tried to promote adult wellness is through the use of community circles. As a part of our school's collective investment in restorative culture, staff have interacted in community circles as part of staff meetings and professional development. These sessions allow the adults in the building a chance to better get to know one another. An example of a lower-level question that might be asked to a group that's sitting together is, "What's one word that describes you and why?" just so that everyone gets a chance to know one another.
Hi, Carrie Anzada, Social Studies teacher, Crimson Team Leader. And as you can see, I was eager to get to this podium, to cut Scott off, but I wanted to say I'm thrilled to be here tonight. I see so many wonderful, familiar faces from being over here at Silas Dean for 20 years, including Ms. Data, who is a former student. I'm thrilled to see you tonight, so congratulations on your appointment. All right, so I am here to talk about strengthening school culture, and I think at Silas Dean, we're doing a pretty darn good job here. You know, I'm happy to say that one of our last PDs, we had Doris Duggins, who's a dear friend, and Pam Harrison come, and we had courageous conversations. And I continue to feel like we do have that comfort level at Silas Dean, where we do have these conversations, where we're strengthening our practice, as well as, you know, kind of making those connections with our colleagues. So I'm really proud to say that we are continuing that work at our school. Additionally, we're happy to have our diversity club back. It had kind of taken a hiatus, and now that we have that back, we're looking forward to seeing all the wonderful things that the students will be doing this year, just recently got reinstated. Thank you to the board as well for helping us get our late bus back and helping us, you know, strengthen our school culture. That's provided such a great need where the students were not able to always attend after-school things, and so I'm really happy about that. To kind of highlight that, we have, this year for Beauty and the Beast, 90 to 100 kids who are now part of our drama club, who can now stay after and be a part of that I talked to Ms. Maddox today, and she said she feels like that is kind of us, like, you know, it's a good reflection of us coming out of COVID, kind of like hibernation, and that we also had that wonderful 6th grade transition program this year where those students could come and again, see the wonderful drama productions that we're doing at Silas Dean. To kind of echo that, again, all of the programs that we have at our school are being supported by that late bus as well. One thing that's especially near and dear to my heart, because I support it every week, is the Bright Futures Cafe, where our students are learning vocational and social skills at this point, and they deliver whatever you would like with Michael Schaaf, kind of taking the spearhead with that, and Roe, our special education teacher. And they are delivering coffee and learning those social skills, and I'm always good for like, you know, a lemon, you know, tea, come on in, hi, how you doing? So it's wonderful to see those students in action. Again, My Kindness Club is doing its thing and trying to promote wonderful things at Silas Dean. I want to say thank you to the board members who supported the REL nomination for me. We use that money this year to actually help with supplies for our Veterans Day cards, which all of the folks here were a part of, all the social studies teachers, and we partner with Kids Care for Vets, which is continuing. I had gotten kind of hooked up with that organization through Sally, so thank you. We are doing some great work there. They picked up the cards this week, and they're picking up more. To talk about strengthening our parent partnerships, you know, we continue to work with our wonderful parent action committee. They are sponsoring, if you have time, this like upcoming two weeks. We're having the National Paint Night, as well as the high schools doing it, but we're doing it here at Silas Dean, so if you've got a little bit of talent, or you just want to try your hand at something, I invite you to come out to Silas Dean to see what our wonderful parents are doing. We've also got our parents on board sponsoring those dances. So if you're looking to get your groove on, come out and support those parents, you know? You know, I think it's really eye-opening for them to come out and see what their kids are doing on like a dance night, you know? I definitely did my share of dances in these 20 years. You know, we've just got such great communication going on with our parents. I think every single one of the people on the leadership team reaches out, whether it's like every couple of weeks or, you know, you know, monthly, to let them know like what's happening on our teams. And so we've got a lot of really great things going at Silas Dean, and if you haven't been there in a while, come on and check us out, because it's, you know, kind of like the wonderful place to be here at, you know, at the middle school, so, or just reminisce your junior high days, so I don't know. You know, you take your pick. So thank you very much for everybody, and keep supporting us, because we love your support and everything that you do for us, so thank you.
So in addition to all of that, at SDMS, we have a school-based equity team comprised of administration, parents, I'm sorry, administration, teachers, and staff. Our goal is to promote representation and inclusivity in curriculum and school-based activities. Some of the things that the team has done include creating slideshows for the theme months, such as Women's History and Black History Month, providing supports in a fasting space for those celebrating Ramadan, and having culturally diverse literature in the library and classrooms that is accessible to all.
All right, I'm here to talk a little bit more about our equity focus, and a couple other ways. We are reviving and re-establishing our diversity club and our SDMS Access Club. The diversity club offers students the platform to explore what diversity means, excuse me, learn various, learn about various cultures and backgrounds, and celebrate diversity by cultivating an appreciation for differences. The club is planning an event to share foods from different cultures to help create an awareness for diversity and value for what makes each of us unique and special. The SDMS Access Club is being re-established to provide students the opportunity to share newsworthy information about our school and the Weathersfield community. Students have shown great interest and enthusiasm in creating digital newsletters and recorded newscasts to inform students, staff, and families about relevant, community-based stories. Students can take on various roles, such as writers, designers, artists, photographers, videographers, and speakers. And by using their interests and talents, they can communicate student-centered news stories, not only with their peers, but to our SDMS families as well. I'm excited to start working with that myself, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Dossie. I'm a 7th grade language arts teacher, and I'm also the team leader for the Green Team. When it comes to our achievement pillar, we are focusing on rigorous assessments, where we're developing common assessments to measure student progress and to inform instruction. Content teams at each grade level and department are creating or revising common assessments in order to provide feedback to students on skills and identify trends in order to inform instruction. For example, in our 7th grade science classes, authentic phenomena-driven assessments are being created based on interactive laboratory experiments that align with our NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards, and the practices. This is allowing student progress to be monitored through both teacher feedback and student reflection, resulting in classroom interventions and revised instruction. And in 8th grade, in our social studies, our curriculum is going to be revising, beginning to be revised this spring, in order to align more closely with our new science, excuse me, social studies standards. Teachers will reflect on current lessons to increase rigor, specifically focusing on students being able to think deeply about the information and elaborate on evidence. In language arts, we're implementing research-based practices to improve vocabulary reading and writing skills. In our classrooms, we have been using our scheduled content and department meeting times to research and discuss various strategies for vocabulary instruction, including morphemes and the Freyer model. For the first round of implementation in 7th grade, students will acquire new vocabulary through connotative and denotative practice. In both grades, we're continuing to design and revise rigorous curriculum aligned to common core standards. And to elevate curriculum, we are aligning lessons and assessments with Hess's Rigor Matrix to foster critical thinking. Teachers are utilizing differentiated materials and tools for nonfiction texts to be accessible to a wide range of readers and to grow reading strategies. In 8th grade social studies, teachers are working on and revising their end-of-unit assessments to be more DOK Level 3 and 4. Our science curriculum has been revised to promote more critical levels of thinking through applying, analyzing, and evaluating scientific principles. Students engage with a phenomenon by collecting data from hands-on laboratory experiments to formulate conclusions about the science behind how the world works.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Mandeville. I am a 7th grade math teacher, and the board is going to get a firsthand glimpse of how the best-laid plans go awry. Thanks, it's making it a little easier. So, take off my glasses. So each of the math teachers in both the 7th and 8th grade received the building thinking classroom that we will be using throughout the school year. Both content and department time will be used to explore the strategies within the book. With the new teacher evaluation plan that's, that's coming through, it's a wonderful opportunity to try different things. In fact, both of our administrators have been encouraging us to pick a skill from the book. Try it. See how it goes. I'm old, some of you had me as a teacher, so you know that. So trying different things are not always easy. So I picked a strategy from the book, had the kids come into class, had them try it, and it was tremendous. For them, it was an opportunity to see me do something different, and for me, it was an opportunity to reflect, how would I do that differently? What did they like about it? I should have invited my evaluator in, I did not. So I will be sure to try more strategies from the book. And again, both the 7th and 8th grade math teachers are, receive a copy of that book and will be employing strategies throughout the school year. Within that book, included within the strategies are opportunities for problem-solving, which our students always need practice with, and included with that will be the rigor that we will be trying to infuse more so into our classroom, to make discussions richer, to increase that problem-solving ability. Thank you.
Good evening, Eric Hennessy. I'm a 7th and 8th grade tech ed teacher at Silas Dean, and I'm excited to talk about our vision of the graduate capstone project, and how we're starting to think about, what's this going to look like at the middle school level? At the high school, they have it. And then the thing that I'm excited about, middle school, I kind of look at it, this is a way for us, or as a middle school teacher, it's a way for us to help our students build the skills for them to be successful in high school. And those skills, in my class, I have the privilege to basically, you know, start with a problem, and then have the kids try to figure that out, and be, and learn how to be comfortable in the struggle of trying to learn. And I think that's really what we're looking at, the capstone project, is trying to create something that is going to add value to our students, but also help them prepare for the challenges of high school. Because high school is going to, you know, prepare those students for the challenges of life. So what can we do at the middle school level? And really what I think it is, is allowing our students to take ownership in their learning. I think sometimes we're hesitant at the middle school level to give them that ownership and kind of direct their learning, and kind of tell them to take on challenges. So that's kind of what we're doing right now at the middle schools, is we're going to form a committee, which we have eight members of right now, and we want to figure out, hey, what is this project going to look like? What are we going, how are we going to assess it? How are we going to, what's it going to look like? Is it going to be a research project? Is it going to be a video? It could be, and that's the thing is, the nice thing is, it could be a little bit of everything. And we want the students to take direction in this, because I think, once we allow the students to take direction in it, in the project, and kind of take, you know, what this looks like, or the rules of kind of the normal education, I think that's when we're really going to get the students to buy in and invest in learning. And at the end, ultimately, the goal is to get our students to enjoy learning, and to own that learning. And hopefully, I think, by building these skills, and adding some rigor, and letting the kids know it's all right to struggle, you know, true learning doesn't, really doesn't happen until you kind of fail at first, and then figure out, hey, how am I going to fix this problem now? And those are the kind of the skills we want to, you know, help our students get to. Because ultimately, the goal is, we want to develop a capstone project for our 8th grade students that leads into what they're doing at the high school, and allows them to be more successful. And at the end of the day, if we can, you know, I think the goal of education is, if we can get our students to take ownership in their education, that's one, that's one step closer to their future success, and also coming up with challenge, you know, overcoming challenges and any opportunities that come in their way in the future. But I'm excited, and can't wait to get kind of planning and see where this thing kind of goes. We don't have really clear-cut ideas of what this is going to look like until we kind of meet. The goal is to kind of have kind of a, a test at the end of this year, and to have a group of students kind of go through this project, and see how it goes up there, and then kind of have it figured out, so we can kind of launch this thing for sure next, next school year, and see if we can have all the 8th graders doing it. All right? Thank you.
So to go off of that, students in special education begin transition planning at the age of 13. This is when they start having goals in their IEPs around employment and post-secondary. Although it may be young to think about what they want to do in the future, when you ask any student, most students in 7th grade, they have no idea what they want to do. But it's a time that they explore their strengths, their weaknesses, what makes them a good student, what they need to work on as a student, what they're good at outside of school, and what they're good at inside of school, how it aligns to the pillars of being a problem solver, communicator. This is a perfect time for them to take a number of transition assessments. This year, we were given a grant from the state for transition, where we were able to purchase different transition assessments for our students to take. In addition to that, our students in our Life Skills Program are partnering with the high school and our WTA to build a partnership, to learn from one another, to go out in the community and transfer the skills that they're learning in the classroom to places like restaurants, stores, working on money skills, social skills, reading skills, everything that they need to be as independent as they can for the future. And working with some of our older students who have had this experience has been a huge success for them.
All right, and lastly, we are dedicated to establishing strong professional learning communities, or PLCs, and building our collective efficacy to enhance student learning and achievement at SDMS. To start, we reviewed our already-established meeting times to ensure we're using this time effectively, with a focus of fostering learning and leadership among our staff, and using insights from our discussions to guide instruction. At the beginning of the year, teachers completed a survey to reflect on our meeting structures. Together, we analyzed the data to identify areas of growth, such as improving our collaborative efforts on common assessments, as well as our action research. These efforts allow us to refine our practice, support student achievement, and drive meaningful student growth. In content teams, we are continuing our work on increasing our rigor, identifying strategies to reveal student thinking, and building problem-solving skills aligned with our vision of a graduate. By doing so, we cultivate collective efficacy and strengthen our school culture at the same time. As you can see, we have a really exceptional staff who are dedicated to challenging and preparing our students for a smooth transition to the high school. Although we are not with the high school this year for our presentation, we thank Mrs. O'Connor for her support and staying here tonight to watch us. We are also fortunate to have a highly supportive parent group PAC, whose involvement makes SDMS a fantastic place to learn, grow, and work. And together, we are the epitome of the SDMS Lions.
Thank you. Anybody up here have a question for our Silas Dean Middle School? No? I just want to comment, you know, you can feel your energy, which is wonderful, I'm sure you get it from the kids too, but it's wonderful to have you up here and have the, the relationship between the middle school and the high school, and we see it growing every year, and now that capstone piece, that's wonderful. So congratulations, everyone.
I certainly have a couple of comments to make, and I just want to say, Silas Dean Middle School, you've come a long way, and I could not be more proud of the transformation that I have seen at that school, from culture and climate to academic rigor, what I saw last year to what I've seen this year already with instructional rounds. The kids are working harder than the staff. I will say to Mrs. Anzade, along with Mr. Solano and Mrs. Maddox, thank you for not hitting me in the face with that bowling ball, but you talked about that, the experiment, that authentic experiment, and I had the opportunity be visiting Silas Dean one day when that was going on, and to have the kids have that real-world experience is huge. The dance, I did get to the 7th grade dance, and the excitement among the kids to be there, among their peers, and to see the number of parents that come out to sell pizza or to chaperone and monitor what the kids are doing, is, is really heartwarming to see. I see that school as really being transformative, and it really is the leadership work of the Silas Dean leadership team, the administration, every staff member in that building doing what they need to do to make kids succeed. So thank you all for your hard work. Could not be more proud.
Okay. I was going to say something, but I really do enjoy working with you guys as a board member that goes to the PAC meetings, your energy, your commitment, your, your thankfulness for every little thing that we could do for middle schoolers. It's just amazing, and maybe it's my middle school teacher heart, that's where I originally taught. It's a wonderful, you guys are just an awesome staff, so thank you.
I'd also like to say thank you for working all day, working very hard all day, coming to this meeting tonight, and showing the level of energy and excitement that I really think is pure joy coming out of you. It seems like you're just totally excited for the work that's going on, and that, I can only imagine how positively that impacts the kids, and I thank you very much for that. I'm also super excited to hear a little bit more about the vision of the graduate for the middle school. I think that's very exciting, hearing about taking ownership of your learning and being, you know, where I work, we say, you know, let's fail fast, and, you know, get up and learn from it and go forward. So I think that's great, that you can instill that in kids, so that you can help support their, their strength in learning. And then the other thing I just wanted to compliment you on is, just all the focus on, it seems like you're really looking at the entire child, not just what goes through in the academics, you know, looking for vocational opportunities, social opportunities, you know, engaging with people. And I just thank you so much for all that you're doing for this middle school. And I, I just thank you so much for all that you're doing for this middle school age especially. Thank you.
I just want to thank you as well, just the energy and the positiveness. I remember my kids went to SDMS, it just, I was always struck by how positive teachers were and how nice they were and, um, until, still to this day, even with the struggles of COVID and everything. But I'm very happy that the late bus is back for the middle school because I was a late bus kid, and I remember when they said they weren't running it anymore, and I was really concerned, but I'm glad, especially for the middle school, because they don't have, you know, friends to give them rides home or anything like that. And it's so important to get involved when you're that age, you know? They, they get out of the K through 6 school, they go to, they get to have so much more independence at SDMS. And now that there's so many after-school activities and then the musical, it's so important to have that, that, you know, added transportation to give those kids the ability to go, you know, do those things. I have one more I was going to say. Oh, and the musical, I'm so excited, there's so many people. And last year, I couldn't believe how many kids were in the musical. So, um, my neighbor was one of the stars, so, and I have like five 8th graders on my street, and they're all just so well-adjusted, they love school, and it's just great. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Okay. All right, move on. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. And we'll move on to meetings held. There was a special Board of Ed meeting on October 23rd, 2024, and that was a special Board of Ed meeting in which the Weathersfield Board of Education ratified the successor contract between the Weathersfield Board of Education and the Weathersfield Federation of Teachers. Also, we selected the Cooperative Educational Services as the superintendent's search firm. And finally, we established the Weathersfield Board of Ed as the Superintendent of School Search Committee. We also had facilities and maintenance that had to be canceled and policy and planning, but Christina, we had Human Resources and Personnel Committee. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Uh, the first item was a staff gift, and I will update at our next meeting, but the purpose was to thank our staff, our amazing staff. Having an appreciative staff means that the students are taken care of, um, and I know a lot of board members felt that way, so we'll, we'll catch up on that a little bit later. Item number two was just to kind of create a culture calendar to kind of see where we are promoting, you know, like the, SDMS said that they have a Friday breakfast, but just a calendar, but Sally Destoy has recommended maybe collecting all the schools' news that we get every, uh, Friday. And that way, you know, it's, we, it's kind of in one spot. And also, um, when we're transitioning the new superintendent, they can kind of see what every school's doing so that it maintains their, their culture. Item number three was absences and leave update. And as of right now, the central office has done an amazing job of hiring all teaching staff. There's still a few openings in different areas, but, um, the board brought up the, you know, the concern that we need a budget for substitute pay because sometimes that's, that's an item that doesn't, it's hard to budget for. So, we just want to make sure that we are covering that for the district. Negotiations went well for the teacher contract, and, um, the insurance wellness program has 95% participation in it. I encourage parents and families to read the minutes that are, um, the meeting minutes that are always up in, in the board website. Be informed, be an informed member, ask questions. It's good to do that.
Thank you very much. Okay, meetings that are scheduled. We have Student Program and Services Committee meeting on 11/18/24 at 6 o'clock, and we have WECC, Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, and if I'm correct, that's their annual meeting?
That is correct.
Right. And it's at Emerson Williams. Okay. And that's at 5:30 on November 19th. And Policy and Planning Committee on November 21st at 6 o'clock. Okay. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that you have five minutes. Okay. Are there any board comments?
I attended the Charles Wright PTO meeting on October 30th, and, um, the TSKP, our, um, project manager we hired to come up with a plan for renovating or in building new schools, was there. They gathered information and ideas from the PTO membership concerning the future of their school. They were asked what they liked about the school, what they would change if they, if it were to be rebuilt or renovated as new. They also had representatives from the kindergarten team, Mindy Harrington and Linda Morrissey. They gave their grade level update. These teachers related that this year's kindergarten students are more ready than kindergarten teachers in the past, most likely due to the fact that they're a little bit older now. They reported that attention and self-help skills are much better. They also reported that they are off to a noticeably better start academically due to the new reading program. And then also, their Hawk Helpers Weekend Backpack Program that I've mentioned before is going well. Volunteers to pack backpacks and deliver them are always appreciated and, um, as are donations. And then just generally, the Charles Wright PTO is very busy planning fun events that benefit students and teachers. They, they take nice care of their teachers also.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chairperson, I wanted to congratulate all the fall sports. I know football's still going, but field hockey went down to Joe Barlow and had an upset win, moved on, they did lose the next round. Volleyball, for the first time in, I think, two decades, had a home volleyball match in the state tournament. They won, they went to Nogatuck, they won again, and then they lost this past weekend, another tough loss in the quarterfinals. Boys soccer had a tough loss in the quarterfinals, and I believe girls soccer's lost in the first round. But we still have boys football. I'm, if you following along, I believe Thanksgiving night could end up being a big game for both Newington and Weathersfield, so it should be a fun next couple of weeks for football.
You like our Weathersfield ESPN? Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else for comments? Marjorie?
I just wanted to say I went to see the production of Macbeth at the high school on Sunday, and it was just, uh, just a wonderful performance and so amazingly complicated and difficult, and the set was amazing, the lights were amazing, just you could see there's a lot of collaboration there. Even a couple of teachers were actors, I think. And, uh, just the acting and, and the passion that went into that Shakespearean play was, was really, was really impressive. So, I just wanted to give kudos to those who performed.
Thank you. Anyone else? John?
Yeah, I wanted to give everybody an update from our friends at the Building Committee, so they had a, a meeting here in Town Hall yesterday. First thing I want to say is I'm really impressed by TSKP. They're, they're doing a really good job, even professionally outside of the board. I've been through a lot of these presentations, and, uh, they're doing a really great job. They're nearing the completion of their community outreach and feedback phase. November 18th, right here before the town council meeting, there'll be another community outreach, uh, meeting here, right here in this room. I encourage everyone to come in and participate and, and meet the team at TSKP. Thank you for all the feedback you've already provided through PTOs, et cetera. It's really helpful. The other part of the meeting yesterday was, TSKP put together a presentation of all the different data points and compiled opportunities and constraints through all the different school buildings and sites around town. It was a pretty lengthy presentation, way too much for me to give here unless you want to stay an extra hour. But in the very near future, this, this board, very, very near future, this board is going to get, uh, that full presentation from TSKP. It's very important. They went through all the different data, topography, everything that we need to know about each school site and what we can and cannot build on. And as, like, as I mentioned, there'll be a future meeting, and I encourage also everybody from the public to attend, uh, the Building Committee meetings. There have, has been an increased amount of people coming, and I really love to see that, and I still continue to encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Plus, those meetings are so interesting. They really are, the research they're working on. Anyone else for a closing comment? Jim?
I just wanted to mention that I attended the last band competition program and also the National Honors Society for Languages at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we all set? I was just going to mention too, the play. Macbeth was awesome, and Macbeth, you know, in his leather was just such a contemporary look at the whole play. Loved it. These thespians in our high school are fabulous. Also, we celebrated Veterans Day at the high school too, which, you know, you, you learn history so that you can learn from history, and we hope that our young people who were there on Monday are learning. It was a great day for our young citizens to learn about the history of our country. So, um, it was, it was great. So, are there any other comments on the high school from Angelika Data? Life at the high school?
Yes. So, we have a lot of amazing things that are currently happening and have happened, for instance, like the Macbeth play. Absolutely amazing production, and of course, the Veterans Day ceremony, it was great to see like everyone together and honoring our veterans. Tomorrow, the habit, students helping out the Habitat for Humanity are going to like help build a house, and after school, we have our monthly National Honor Society meeting. I believe Mr. Carey was talking about some of the sports. We had lots of teams that made it to the first, or made it past the first round of state tournament, and today, I believe, was the state finals for girls swim and dive. We had lots of girls who made it to the finals. And for field hockey, I believe Emily Finelli, she's a junior, she made the first team All State team, and she was also selected to be a part of the junior select game, um, which is awesome. I believe we have a football game this Friday, I think one of the last ones of the regular season. Next week, we have homecoming, and we also had our Language Honor Society inductions as well as our English Honor Society induction. And a couple of things are happening next week are, um, the planning of the semi-annual blood drive, our interact club meeting, and the National Art Honor Society is having their paint night. So, yeah, lots of amazing things.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so, oop, oop. We got somebody?
I believe this week's football, I, I think it's on Thursday this week, the 14th.
I think so, yeah.
It's Thursday, that's correct. Thursday, it is at 6 o'clock.
They moved the time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we have two more home games this Thursday and then the night before Thanksgiving against Newington. That will also be a 6 o'clock game. We expect that one to be very, very, very well-attended. Thank you.
Okay. Good everyone? Okay, is there any unfinished business? Okay, so at this time, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the superintendent's goals for 2024-25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. That concludes our regular meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Do you have a vote?
Oh, we vote on the ending? Sorry. All in favor of the?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Thank you again for joining us tonight.